Good evening. Town of Killenly reconvene annual town meeting Monday, June 3rd, 2024 to be adjourned to machine vote. The reconvene annual town meeting of electors and citizens qualified to vote in the town meeting with the Town of Killenly, Connecticut shall be held pursuant to section 701 of the Killenly Town Charter in the auditorium of Killenly Intermediate School, 1599 Upper Maple Street, Killenly, Connecticut on Monday, June 3rd, 2024 at 7:00 PM to consider and/or approve the following. Ordinance approving the operating budget for the Town of Killenly for fiscal year July 1, 2024 to June 30th, 2025. Bureau ordained by the Town Council of the Town of Killenly that in accordance with section 1005 of the Town Charter, the budget of the Town of Killenly, Connecticut for the fiscal year July 1, 2024 to June 30th, 2025 in the amount of $23,918,246 allocated to general government and $47,383,839 allocated to education for a total combined budget of $71,302,85 to be adopted. Killenly Town Council Jason Anderson Chair. Resolution setting the dates, times, and place of the reconvene annual town meeting and adjourned reconvene annual town meeting and machine vote on the 2024-2025 budget ordinance. Pursuant to section 1007, the Town Charter and section 7-7 of the general statute, said town meeting at its conclusion will be adjourned and the before said ordinance as submitted will be submitted to vote upon voting machines scheduled between the hours of 8:00 AM, I mean of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM Tuesday, June 11th, 2024. The ordinance will be placed on the voting machine under the following heading. Those voters approving the question vote yes, and those opposing the question will vote no. Those voting no will have an additional advisory question, is the budget too high or is the budget too low? Number one, shall the general government budget for the Town of Killenly, Connecticut in the amount of $23,918,246 for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025 be approved? Number two, shall the education budget for the Town of Killenly, Connecticut in the amount of $47,383,839 for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2025 be approved? Voting will be held at the following polling places. District 1, District 3, and District 5, Board of Ed, Central Office, 79 Westfield Ave., and the Cafeteria, Killenly, Connecticut. District 2 and District 4, Killenly High School, 226 Putnam Pike, Killenly, Connecticut. Absentee ballots will be available in the morning of June 4th, 2024. Please contact the town clerk at 860-779-5307 as soon as possible. All ballots must be issued in person according to Connecticut general statutes. Killenly Town Council Jason Anderson Chair. I now would like to open nominations for the moderator of this reconvene annual town meeting. Is there a second? Are there any more nominations? Are there any more nominations? Are there any more nominations? Like to make a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Now entertain a motion to close nominations. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Like to vote on Jason Anderson as moderator of the reconvene annual town meeting? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? I'd like to turn the meeting over to Jason Anderson.
Welcome, everyone. Just so everyone is aware, at the reconvene town meeting, it is slightly different than the annual town meeting. There will be no motions to be made or changes to be made to either of the budgets. This evening is for reasonable discussion only as per the Town Charter section 1007. I will entertain a motion to set a limit of five minutes for comments and discussion from each person on each individual budget.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Ms. Wakefield, second by Ms. George. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance approving the operating budgets for the Town of Killenly for the fiscal year July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2024 as read by the town clerk.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Cattulo, seconded by Ms. Wakefield. Discussion.
No, you don't, you don't vote on that. You go to the next thing for opening.
At this time, the town manager will present the general government budget followed by a presentation from the superintendent on the education budget. After both of the presentations, we will open up for discussion.
Thank you for coming out. So I am gonna just go through kind of a process that the town side has gone through, what changes have occurred through this process and where the current town council proposed budget is at. So to start with, the town side of the budget is created with the council's goals in mind as we go through this. So this was the council's goals that they had set earlier this year, earlier in the year. The next slide reviews the budget development process. So on the town side, we begin that process in January. We go through quite an extensive process in evaluating every single budget line item. We do really a zero-based budgeting type approach in which each department has to justify all of their, all of the requested expenditures. The budget was presented to the town council in April, and since then, the council has held a public hearing. They deliberated, set a budget that went to the annual town meeting. At the annual town meeting, that budget was modified slightly from the town meeting floor. And then there was an all-day machine vote on the 14th. That machine vote failed, which required the town council to redeliberate and set a new budget. They redeliberated on the 21st, set the numbers that you have before you. They did have a secondary meeting on the 23rd to clarify the amount that they had intended for the Board of Education budget. And then that brings us to today, which is the reconvene annual town meeting. And this, tonight's meeting, will adjourn to a machine vote that will be held next Tuesday, June 11th, and it is going to be an all-day machine vote, and that's at our normal polling locations, and that will be for both budget items. The next slide is our grand list changes. So this is the historical view of what the grand list has been for the town. And you'll note that the orange bars are years in which the town had to do the mandatory revaluation every five years. The state requires the town to go through a revaluation process, and this is the resulting of the grand list. If you go to the next slide, the next slide is our mil rate. So when you're comparing the two, you can see that the, again, the orange bars are from years in which we had revaluation. And so as our grand list has increased in those revaluation years, the mil rate decreases in proportion. So you're seeing the historical mil rate changes, and then the proposed, this budget that's before you has a proposed mil rate of 20.32. Next slide. Not gonna go through every single number on this slide, but you can, this is the higher level comparison of the current year budget to the upcoming proposed budget. You'll note on the town operations, based on the most current cuts that the town council has made, we're actually reflecting a decrease year over year of about $137,000 or just over 1%. There is an increase to human services subsidy in that line. I have a slide in here later on that describes this. And that is really about outside agencies. A lot of that is by per capita requirement, and there's been some pressure on our ambulance and paramedic service, so those have some increases to them. There's a decrease to the solid waste subsidy. The solid waste subsidy, the solid waste subcommittee of the town council evaluated the costs for utilization or for disposal at the transfer station and decided to make some changes on that that would reduce the general fund contribution to offset those operational costs of that facility. Debt service has an increase, and that is because we just, we just did our borrowing of funds for the first part of the borrowing of funds for the Westfield Avenue renovation project that we have underway to relocate the community center to that facility. And then, so overall, the general government operating budget is, that is being, that is being managed by the property taxes is just under 9.7, which is a reduction of a little over $1 million. The capital projects budget is really just related to, at this point for the upcoming year is gonna be, is just roads. The proposed utilization for the pavement management plan is $2,250,000, and that is 100% covered by the utilization of fund balance, so it is not impacting mil rate. They're utilizing fund balance in order to be able to make those capital investments. That has been a very key and strategic use of fund balance. As we are going through the borrowing process for our capital improvement plans, we have to go for credit ratings, just like you have to go for, you know, you're a company that's looking, you're looking to borrow money from would pull up your own personal credit rating. They do the same things with towns, and they look at how much we're utilizing our fund balance for offsetting general operating expenses. And so the council, this council and councils before them have been very cautious around the utilization of fund balance, and it is, you know, a very normal practice in utilizing it for capital improvements. This budget that's proposed to you at this point, they heard from the, the council heard from their, from the previous public hearings as well as other public comment, that the taxpayers really wanted to see some utilization of fund balance to offset some of the operational costs, to offset some of that mil rate impact, especially due to the revaluation. So they did activate an additional $750,000 to, to reduce some of the mil rate impact from what people are seeing and experiencing around the mil rate. The la, the next slide really goes over education, which I'll leave for our superintendent. So the mil rate, the cumulative, the mil rate for the current year is 26.88. The proposed mil rate before you right now for next year is 20.32. That's a reduction of 6.57 mils. The next slide is just a very high picture of the various revenue sources that the town receives in order to cover the operational costs. As you see, 54% is by property taxes. The other portion, 25% of that is from educational revenue, which largely that is our education cost sharing grant, our ECS grant that we receive. And then the other, you know, permits, charges for services, tuition, investment income, and fund balance are all those other smaller pies, pieces. This, as we just looked at the revenue, this is the expenditure, so this is again the very high level of the total budget that's before you, and as you can see, just a little over 66% of the budget is Board of Education costs, which kind of follows our normal historical trends. Town operations is 19%. Debt service is just under 7.75%, and then you can see the smaller piece, pie pieces throughout. So this is, how are we expending that revenue that we're receiving? The next couple of slides are kind of more historical in nature. So when we started this budgetary process and I presented to the town council, it was the town manager's budget. And so this captures what some of those budgetary pressures were and what the changes were from the current year budget to that original proposed budget from, that I put before the town council. And so a lot of this has changed, and when you go to the next slide, it talks about those human services. So I said in the beginning that, you know, we did get a lot of pressure from some of those human services subsidy, and initially, we had a request for a new agency that had submitted for a funding request. Next slide. The town council then deliberated on this, and the town council made a number of changes to that original round that came before you at the annual town meeting. The first was, they made, they made reductions around the storm maintenance budget and our highway overtime budget, and that was related to, the town has been investing for several years in a reserve called a storm or winter maintenance, or winter maintenance reserve. That has a healthy reserve balance, and so we felt that we could lessen the amount, they felt that they could lessen the amount within the operating budget, and if we have a higher than expected amount of storms, we would be able to fall back onto the reserve to cover those costs in the interim. So they reduced some of those operating costs. The town has had a third mechanic position that's been vacant in our central garage, and it's been vacant for more than a year. They felt that we were, and the town has been functioning without having to send out additional vehicles for contractual services, so they eliminated that vacant position and the benefits that went along with that. So the total operational costs to the town that they cut was just over $165,000. There was a couple of reductions that they made in the human services subsidies. Largely, the biggest one was that reduction, they opted to not fund that newest request from UCFS, just given the current, you know, pressures within the budget. They, my original budget that I had presented to them had a higher request for pavement management. They reduced it back down to the original plan of the $2,250,000, and so that is reflecting here, and they originally reduced the Board of Education's original ask by a little over $700,000. And so the council brought to the annual town meeting a budget, budgets that would bring a proposed mil rate of 21.18. The next slide. We then held the annual town meeting on the first Monday in May, as by charter, and there was a few additional changes that happened from the town meeting floor. So the first one was, I had originally proposed moving a seasonal parks position to a full-time position. We have a lot more year-round work for our Parks Department, and so we only have two full-time individuals that manage all of our parks. We're in the process of building or extending the River Trail further south, and all of those things are utilized year-round, and so that was the original proposal. From the town meeting floor, that was cut back to its seasonal position, so that's one of the revisions. And then there were two, two actions taken to restore funding that had been previously removed. So one was to restore $1,000 to the Conservation Commission, and the other one was to restore $2,000 to the Killenly Business Association funding. So that, those changes resulted in a, in budgets that were being then sent to referendum with a proposed mil rate of 21.15. And as we know, neither of the budgets passed at referendum, so the town council had to come back for redeliberation again. So this round of redeliberation, I've outlined in here all of the changes that have been made. So for town operations, the town has been putting into our reserve account for information technologies. This is our IT reserve, and it manages all of our hardware costs as well as any initial upgrade costs for any software that we're required, that we need to have. The reserve has had, does have a little over, about $260,000 in it, and they felt that for this year, we could bypass doing a contribution to that reserve, and the reserve would still stay relatively healthy through the expenditures that we were projecting for next year. The next one, debt service. So on May 9th, the town closed on our borrowing for, that I mentioned that we did for the Westfield Avenue project. It was a $10 million debt issuance, and because of the town's high credit rating, we have, we're, the town is rated at a AA+ credit rating, and that's important because that dictates how much we pay in interest, and it also dictates how much competition we have when we're selling those bonds. We were very fortunate, we had nine bidders into that pool, and because the competition was so strong, when we closed out, the buyers actually paid a premium for our bonds. So instead of having to issue debt for the full $10 million, we had, we had $700,000 in premiums that we were able to take and lower the amount of money that we were borrowing, which also lowered the interest. So by having that strong credit rating, which was, is really been due to the town's prudent utilization of their fund balance and the very strong fiscal responsibility of this council and all previous councils and boards of educations, that's, we were able to take, we now know exactly how much we have to pay for our, our debt payments for next year for that bond, and so we were able to recognize a $239,000 savings from that. So that's, you know, a very strong showing and a really great result of having that AA+ credit rating. The town council did reduce the Board of Education operating budget by an additional $125,000. And then the other components are really all reflects of revenue changes. So like I mentioned before, they activated $750,000 of fund balance to also reduce the mil rate. They decided, they opted to transfer $50,000 and, from the storm maintenance reserve and $50,000 from our constabulary reserve into revenue to also reduce mil rate. And lastly, we've been able to reevaluate how much available funding or cash reserves that the town would be able to have in order to be able to earn interest on those. We have, as you're aware, two very large capital projects. For a while, in the very beginning of the KMS project, we weren't receiving regular payments from the state for their reimbursement portion. The state is reimbursing the town a little over 72% of that project, and for the initial part, we were cash flowing, we were paying, we were covering those costs, so we didn't have those extra cash reserves in order to earn the interest. So we've been able to establish that payment flow from the state, and so we're able to increase the amount we're estimating for interest income by the 250,000. The last component here is capital projects. So every time the mil rate is adjusted, we have to adjust the value that we are assuming that we're gonna receive in revenue from lake regenerating, but we recognize that that is right now a disputed payment. They have a tax appeal, and we are currently in negotiation with them. So in accordance with what our auditors have guided us to, we recognize any of that additional amount as an, as a expenditure to capital projects. All of that would have to be authorized in the future, once we know exactly how much funding we're actually gonna receive, or once that tax payment, that tax appeal is settled. So that is a change to the overall expenditure number, but it really doesn't have an impact on mil rate because it is a disputed amount. So the proposed budget that you have before you has a mil rate calculation of 20.32. So my next couple of slides is really, what does this mean? One of the things that, and everyone rightfully so, has been very focused on, the impact from their real estate. We've all had a revaluation. I know my property went up substantially, my son's property went up substantially, everybody's properties went up substantially when you're looking at what the real estate market has been like over the last several years. And so we've been demonstrating what that might look like to individual persons, but one component that we really haven't, and I, and I have not really voiced much of, is motor vehicle. Motor vehicle can be a pretty substantial tax payment as well, and as we've seen over the last couple of years, there's actually been increases in our motor vehicle values, which is kind of out of the ordinary. Most of us are very used to having a motor vehicle come onto our tax rolls, and then it decreases every year because most of the time, the minute you drive it off the lot, it loses value, right? Over the last few years, that hasn't been the case, and they've been increasing in value. Well, not this year. So for your upcoming, for the grand list of October of 2023, so your mil, your tax rate that's gonna be coming out for the July, motor vehicles actually have a decrease in value. So they're kind of going back to what I would consider the normal process for vehicles. So they're starting to decrease. So your motor vehicles are gonna have a, are gonna have really a double effect of decrease. Number one, the value is decreasing. Number two, the mil rate right now before you proposed is a decrease of over six mils. So the factor that you use to calculate the amount of taxes has decreased also. Your rate of taxation has decreased also for your motor vehicles. So I've put up, I've got four examples just to give you some ideas, and these are legitimate properties with their motor vehicles. I pulled off the grand list. So for taxpayer A, in the current fiscal year, they're paying a little over $4,200 in real estate taxes, and they're paying just over $1,600 in motor vehicle taxes. The reassessment, clearly you can see from the reassessment of their real estate, their real estate value went up, and even with the applied mil rate of 20.32, they're gonna have an increase in real estate taxes. And if we stopped there, that would show an increase of $577 in taxes. However, when you look at their motor vehicle, their motor vehicle has decreased using the same calculation with the, with the proposed mil rate, their motor vehicle tax would drop to a little over $1,100. So when you net the two, the savings of $543 in motor vehicle taxes, when you net the two, the net increase to this taxpayer is $34, based on what, on the proposed budgets that are before you. Taxpayer B, I sent, I'm not gonna walk through every single one in full detail, but taxpayer B is another example. In this one, they actually have a decrease. They result in a net decrease of $118. So they had a much smaller increase on real estate and a much larger decrease on motor Taxpayer C also results in a decrease. So this one, the property assessment started in 2022, was $192,000. The revaluation put them at $267,000. And so, and you can see from their motor vehicle assessments, their motor vehicle assessment also dropped from $44,000 to just under $37,000. So it results in a net decrease in taxes of $199. And then the last one, D, taxpayer D, this one will still have a net increase in taxes. Their real estate taxes for the current fiscal year are a little over $8,400. Under the proposed mil rate, they would have real estate taxes of just over $9,000. They have older vehicles, and so they have motor vehicle assessment in the current year of just over $14,000, and that's declining to just under $13,000. So their taxes on their real estate are increasing by $646, but their motor vehicle is decreasing by 131, which provides a net increase of 515. So I give these to you as just examples, and I've, I say this every time, everybody's property is unique, everybody's property situation is unique. If you have questions about what this mil rate, what this would mean for you individually, and you're struggling at all with finding the information online, or just you don't wanna try and figure it out online, call our office. Gladly, we will walk through it, we will pull out the information and walk through with you on it, but you really, everyone should really look at that independently on their own, because everybody's situation is very different. The next slide is really talking about those resources and the links on our websites, but again, you know, sometimes I know when you get onto a website that's brand new to you, sometimes it's hard to find things, and that's fine. Just give a ring, we'll gladly walk through it with you. Go over any questions you may have. We wanna make sure that everyone, you know, has their, their questions answered. So I will turn this now over to the superintendent. So I will turn this now over to the superintendent.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Sue Nash, Superintendent of Killingley Public Schools. Thank you so much for coming tonight. So tonight, I want to bring you through the journey of the Board of Education budget. And so here we are, the reconvened town meeting on June 3rd. But this has been a journey that started way back in the fall. And let's go through a little bit of a timeline here so you can see the work that has been done that led us here today. So first, in the fall, we introduced a zero-based budgeting approach to our administrative team. This was a new approach for our admin team. And really what this means is that every purchase should be itemized and justified. So you build your budget, one justified line by one justified line. So we made this decision because sometimes you just have to clear out and start from scratch. And you have to make sure that all of your purchases support your educational goals and you do not have any overlap or redundancy. So as you can imagine, building one line by one line was a long and tedious process. But at the end, we were able to make reductions in nearly all of our lines, so it was well worth it. And then after building our budget and taking into consideration all of our contracted salaries, we ended up with a budget of 49 million or 4.98% increase. Clearly way too high. So back to the drawing boards, we went. And we asked all of our administrators to reduce by 15%. So every administrator reduced by 15%. That brought our budget down to 4.05% increase, again, still too high. So we worked to reduce it even further. And in March, our Board of Education unanimously adopted a budget of 48 million or 3.01%. And then after that, what typically happens is the town council will deliberate and potentially make some reductions. The reductions this year were 703,722. And so we made those reductions. I'll talk about what those reductions were in just a bit. And that brought it down, our budget down to 1.5%. And then, of course, unfortunately, the referendum failed. And then when that happens, the Board of Education budget goes back and can be deliberated upon, and there can be further reductions. And so this year, there was further reduction to the Board of Education budget by the town council of $125,000. And so here we are tonight. I will talk a little bit about the initial reductions we made of 703,000 and the additional reductions of $125,000. But currently, our budget stands at 47 million or 1.24% increase. All right. So here's just an overview of what I said in a more simple form. This is, these are the budget numbers through time, and you can see where we are right now. But I want to linger a little bit at the reduction of 703,000 that brought our, the Board of Education budget down to 1.5%. All right. So the first reductions were recognized relatively naturally. These reductions were made from hiring at lower steps. So you always have openings that you need to fill for the next school year. So positions, right? And sometimes you are able to hire an educator or a para at a lower rate because they have less years' experience. Sometimes those new hires don't take insurance. So sometimes you are able to recognize savings in the spring for the following year, just naturally. This naturally occurs. It should be noted, this can also work in the opposite direction. So if you hire an educator to fill a position and that educator comes with more years' experience, so that could work in the opposite direction, right? And then for reductions in the middle there, we reduced our IT equipment line and protech line, also reduced the Killingley Intermediate School library aid to a halftime position. And we were able to recognize a savings of 43,000 there. And then there was an elimination of a position of a teacher of the deaf. I do want to spend a moment there. This position was not filled. We have two teachers of the deaf in Killingley. At the beginning or middle of the year, one of those teachers resigned. And after analysis of the number of students that we have that require services from a teacher of the deaf, we were confident that we would be able to service the students that we have with one teacher of the deaf. So this is not a position that was filled, this was a position that was at the time vacant. And then we have some other funding sources. Typically, for us and the Board of Education side, our other funding sources are grants. So we were able to move some salaries and positions into grants, also spending some additional surplus funds with a savings of $97,000. And then there was more. So these maneuvers came with slight risk. The first maneuver that we made to, again, come up with the 703 number, that was the reduction from the town council initially, was to zero out the line called agency-placed student tuition. And what that means is that we do have a line in our budget for students that are placed by an agency into an out-of-district placement. The agency is almost always DCF. So if DCF has care of a student and DCF says the student needs to be in a different setting, a different educational setting, and that comes with tuition, we don't have a whole lot to say about that, we just simply pay the tuition. It should be noted that there are years that we have not had this situation, and there have been years that we have had several students in this situation. So it is always difficult to budget this line. The next savings, which is $205,000, is from an excess cost reimbursement estimate. So very quickly, what is this? So every year, we have money that we budget for students in special education that receive their education outside of Killingley Public Schools. And there is a formula that the state uses that reimburses all districts a certain amount of money that we pay for tuition. So the problematic part of this is that we never know exactly what the percent is going to be for reimbursement. It could be 70%, it could be 65%, it could be 75%. It varies year to year, and districts never know what that percentage is until the spring. So you're always kind of guessing what to budget for here. So we had initially been pretty conservative, going with a 60% reimbursement. And so bumping that up to a 70% reimbursement, we were able to recognize a $205,000 savings. So you might be wondering, well, what if you estimated wrong? Or what if you really did need that $190,000 for a student that is agency-placed? So we know that if that does come to fruition, we will be using our non-lapsing account to make up for that difference. And so all of that that I just said equals the $703,000, which was the town council initial reduction on the Board of Education budget. All right, back to where we were. So like I mentioned before, we were reduced, again after the failed referendum, by an additional $125,000. So I wanted to spend a moment here talking about what those reductions look like. But before I do, I wanted to read this slide to the audience. "We are proud of the experiences our students in Killingley Public Schools receive. Those experiences are made possible by our dedicated staff. All staff play a role in this experience, and we will not impact our students' superior experiences." This has been our philosophy throughout the budget process this year. And to that end, I will present two ideas to reduce the additional $125,000 that do not impact positions or programs and ultimately students' experiences. So when we initially presented our budget back in January, in February, we had workshops where we went through this budget book with our Board of Education. And in it was a note that spoke about pending legislation. So if this legislation passed, it would reduce what sending districts would pay for tuition for students that attended magnet schools. We, like most districts, have some students that attend magnet schools. And the legislation just passed last month and was signed by the governor last week. And as a result, based on the 44 slots that we have budgeted for students attending magnet schools, we will find a savings of $111,000. So $111,000 doesn't quite get us up to 125,000, but it's close. So we thought, well, what if we adjusted the excess cost reimbursement just slightly more? So instead of 70%, go up to 71, and what would that get us? Indeed, it gets us to the $125,000. So this is a possible option for reduction. There's one more plan, and that is to reduce special education tuition by $51,000. Again, we would use our non-lapsing if we needed to make up for a shortfall in special education tuition. And then we would increase yet again the excess cost reimbursement percentage to 75,000, which would yield $73,000 in savings. And again, that would be $125,000 in savings. Ultimately, the Board of Education will decide what path to take here. But the important part is that at this current time, we are still able to hold true to not cutting any filled positions or programs that would disrupt our students' experiences. All right. So there's a lot on this. I'm going to go through it pretty quickly, and you have it in front of you. These are the budget lines, and you can see the difference on the right-hand side there. You can see the difference in all of our budget lines from this current fiscal year and next fiscal year. And you can see all of those red lines. These are all lines that we have budgeted less than we did last year. And you can see the majority of our budget is in the first row, that's in salaries. So we have worked very hard. Our Board of Education has worked tremendously hard to be competitive so we can fill our positions. And they've done tremendous work to increase our contracted salaries to make Killingley a more attractive place to work, and this has been successful. This year, we have very few vacant positions, and it's looking like even less next year. So this has worked, our teachers are staying, and this is what we want. I draw your attention to the highlighted yellow box at the bottom. So right now, at a 1.24% increase, that is 578,000 more than last year. Now draw your eyes back up to the top row where it's the 100 line for salaries. And you can see what we need for salaries. Those are contracted obligations is $934,000. So we are not actually even close to covering those. So what we had to do was reduce in other lines to be able to cover our contracted obligations. So of course, you could always reduce that salary line, but that means cutting positions. Here's another way to look at it, if you're a more visual person like myself. You can see how the different parts of the budget make up the whole. Again, that kind of larger dark blue there, those are salaries and benefits. And everything else is a much smaller sliver. So we also do take in revenue. So this is another aspect of the Board of Education budget that I want to make sure everyone in the room understands. We have many tuition students that attend our high school from different towns. We have our agricultural program. We receive grants for our agricultural program, as well as something called an education cost sharing fund from the state. And so we generate roughly $18 million in revenue to offset the education budget. And then I'll just leave this slide up here because I think the power of it speaks for itself. Thank you so much, I really appreciate your time.
Thank you. At this time, we will open up for discussion on the general government budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025. I just ask anyone that is going to speak, step up to the microphone and state your name and address. And again, this is for comments on the town government budget.
Steve, can you double, get that mic going?
Can you just make sure that's on and didn't turn off when we put it in the...
Hang on one second. Sure. So thank you for asking that question, Ian. So the WPCA had a capacity study done of the wastewater treatment plant. And what we have learned from that capacity study is that we are pretty close to nearing treatment capacity. And, you know, we are working with our legal team as to what does that ultimately mean, whether or not there does have to be, whether or not there needs to be a moratorium on connections. That doesn't necessarily stop or prohibit development because there are alternatives around just connection to the sewer. But the town actually has submitted now, this is the second year in a row that we have submitted for congressional designation, delegation funds. We know that Courtney's office has moved forward with our application and Murphy's office is working on that as well. As with any wastewater facility project, it takes time. That, you know, the last wastewater treatment plant update that we just recently did, that was 20 years in planning before that finally got to completion, before we actually broke ground on the actual update, was 20 years. So, you know, clearly, we know that that's going to take time and it's going to take further development. The, we, there's been no formal decision with regards to stopping, you know, or denying connections at this point because we are working through the legal team. But that is going to be an honest conversation that the community is going to have to have, that the WPCA is going to have to reflect upon because the treatment plant... that the WPCA is going to have to reflect upon because the treatment plant can only accept so much before it becomes unable to treat it and then goes into violation. So it is a lot of, you know, we, I don't have an exact timing. I can't say it's a five-year out.
Yeah, I know.
Correct. So we are really starting afresh. I will say that there has been conversation during the facility upgrade planning process where they talked about potentially doing expansion. However, that wasn't funded in that upgrade process. They just upgraded critical components of the existing facility, really geared around nitrogen and phosphate treatment, but not get that, none of that gave the facility greater treatment capacity. But, so there were some ideas floated around during that time span around what it would look like to do additional treatment capacity, but ultimately, those didn't receive the funding. And so those were removed out of the plan relatively, you know, kind of early on in that process. So we do have some conceptual ideas of what that may look like. But again, we would have to revisit it based on current regulations, current treatment requirements. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Christie, could you just grab the podium one for him? We'll switch him out. Yeah. The podium, podium one. We're done with the podium.
I was told not to touch that thing.
Thank you.
There we go.
My name is John LaBelle, 57 Island Road, Davil. I watched the presentation from home, and I tried to figure out where you were, went on a website, couldn't find it. So I took a chance of coming here. We need to pass this budget. I hope that the people listening understand that you've done everything that you could to, at this point, put a budget together that needs to be passed. I encourage everyone to come out and vote and help this community move forward with a budget that has been passed. It is with equal disturbance that I read the report on the sewage treatment plant. All my life, I've spent planning and doing things in five and 10-year increments. I don't understand how we're not at a point of implementation of some kind of a plan, five, 10-year, 20-year plan for the sewage treatment plant. I don't understand how over the last iteration of repairs and upgrades that went into the plant, a long-term plan wasn't developed with an engineer so you have something to go down the street with. I don't understand how we find ourselves in this position today where we potentially are turning down businesses that may want to come to our community. I don't understand the impact this is going to have on the town of Killenly in terms of publicity. What do you mean we have a sewage treatment plant that is either at capacity or potentially with the good graces of Frito-Lay if they do something that ameliorates the situation we have? So in reading that report, what came through to me was Frito-Lay is holding the cards in terms of the future use of this facility. If they expand their treatment to a certain extent, and you have to understand the acronyms, which I don't completely understand. I've been involved in the building of sewage treatment plants for Native American tribes. And I understand you've got to plan these things. 20 years is a long time, so why don't we have a plan over that 20-years period, looking into the future 20 years from now, that allows us to incrementally allow for the expansion of the plant? Now, I don't believe in anyone intentionally brought us to this point, but I don't understand how we're at this point. If I were building a casino, and I had a casino, and I went to the tribal chief and I said, "Sorry, you can't expand your casino because we haven't planned for water treatment, sewer treatment, and the necessary issues to operate this facility." It would be devastating. I find this devastating. So please, put a plan of action together to move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further comment?
Good evening. My name is Russ Daniels. I'm a homeowner at 27 Sales Avenue in Davil. I wanted to mention something quickly about inflation. The last, this town hall meeting and the last one, nobody used, talked about the word inflation. It's devastating everyone, and it's not going to get any better. The current regime is spending money like drunken sailors on shore leave, and that undermines the value of the dollar, which means more inflation. Property tax, two years ago, I turned 65, retired. I was, when you retire your social security, you're basically taking a 60% pay cut. I was, maybe I was naive, but I expected my property tax, there'd be some kind of program to reduce it. After all, I've been working since I was 14 years old. I don't have any kids in the school system, and there's absolutely no reason to hit me with the same property taxes other people do. We do have a program, and I'm not clear if it's a town or state program, to reduce property taxes for seniors, but it's only for a maximum of 20%. In my opinion, that should be 100%. If not 100, then at least 80 or 90, something reasonable. And I can't believe, I come from an old-fashioned Italian family. I can't believe the lack of respect for elderly people. That is totally unexcusable by anyone. And I also work as, I went back to work part-time eight months ago, working for, guess what? The town of Killenly. I drive a school van. In the school, in the town garage, you want to make some savings? We have 13 dump trucks in our garage. They go for 400 to 500,000 dollars each, roughly. We only use, and I see this every single day when I'm at work, we only use two or three a day. And in the winter, when we plow, we have the state to do a lot of the state roads, and maybe we need three or four on a snowstorm. We could reduce that fleet easily and save money right there. Also, I drive a van. We have some vans that have like 300,000 miles on them. That sounds like a lot, right? Well, guess what? These vans are in good shape, with good interiors. They run great, and most importantly, they've got great brakes. And when you're driving a van full of schoolkids, that's extremely important. I was talking to the head mechanic, and he's telling me, "Oh, yeah, we're going to scrap some of those and bring in new ones." And I said, "What are these people thinking of? Who makes these decisions? The person who makes these decisions should be the head mechanic, not somebody sitting in an office pushing a number-two lead pencil who knows nothing about cars and trucks." You can save a lot of money that way. It's just, it's just illogical. It just blows my mind that people think this way. So anyways, I guess I put my two cents in. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further comment?
Seeing none, and taking into consideration some of the discussion that's gone on tonight, especially the discussion over inflation, I do want to thank the town manager for having those four examples of the property tax increases. I went in, did a breakdown on the grand list, separating the residential property from the personal, commercial, industrial, and motor vehicle properties. And what I came down with was during the revaluation, which we do every five years, there was an increase of $389 million. And that equated to a 47.19% increase in the residential property values on the grand list. The remainder of the grand list, which is comprised of commercial, industrial properties, other land, personal properties, and motor vehicles, increased 5.98%. The following are a few things that the results of the revaluation has caused. The percentage of the gross taxable grand list that is comprised of residential properties on October 1st, 2022 was 45.59%, meaning of the taxes, 45.59% of the taxes for the entire budget fell on residential properties. On the October 1st, 2023, this increased to 53.79%. That means there was an increase of 17.99% in the portion of the Killenly combined budget that is covered by taxes on residential properties. When you factor in what this current budget is, that brings the average increase in residential property taxes to 17.76%, and that's at the 20.32 mil rate. On the other side, it equates to a 14.08% decrease in everything else being the motor vehicle, personal property, commercial and industrial, and other land. I did look at one thing, especially, and I wanted to bring this up because the gentleman spoke about inflation. The revals are every five years. For, just for perspective purposes, if you were to factor a hypothetical 3% inflation rate, which we know inflation has been much higher than that recently, if you compound a 3% inflation rate over five years, you would have an increase that would be almost, it would be, numbers I came up with were 12.55% based on the compounding every five years. So when you take that into consideration, a 12.55% increase in inflation, and then the revale, we're looking at the 17.76% increase on the residential property taxes. It isn't a huge difference, but it is definitely a substantial difference. And I do understand, as the gentleman said, that there are a lot of people in this town that are on fixed incomes. And I know that the town council has worked really hard to try and find places we could find cuts. Unfortunately, because of the huge shift in the percentages of the grand list, being such a huge increase in the grand list percentage that is falling on the residential properties, there was just no way possible that we could get down to a point where the residential properties wouldn't be hit with some kind of increase. We would have had to have cut, roughly, I believe the numbers I ran were somewhere around another $5 million out of the overall budget in order to do that. Because as you decrease the whole budget, you're also decreasing not just the residential property side, you're decreasing the, all the others, the industrial, personal property tax, personal property and commercial. So we worked really hard to come up with a budget that was as lean as it could be without decimating services, without completely gutting positions in the town. And I do want to say thank you to my fellow council members who work diligently. I know it wasn't an easy process, but I do want to thank the town staff and council for all their work on this budget. And if anyone else has any further comment, I will still allow for comment. Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment on the Board of Education side.
Jim Silvaro, 237 Mason Hill Road in Davil. Just one comment on the inflation thing you were talking about. It would have been a little better balanced if it had been shared commercially and, you know, across the board. But when you have things like sewer plants that have problems, like the other gentleman was speaking of, it doesn't help for commercial stuff as well. But aside from that, this is the school board. So over the last couple of years, some new positions have been added to the town, some by grants to the school board, some by, I don't know how they got in there. For example, there was a director of mental health brought in by grants, knowing full well that was going to cost the town money once the grant ran out. So, you know, that's got to be at least $150,000 item, if not more. But the other one is the athletic director. This is a one high school town, one middle school town. I don't think there's too many districts out there with such a small school population that have a $100,000 or more position for an athletic director, which has been a part-time stipend for decades. So to me, as long as that's in the budget, it's going to be a no vote for the school board. I think the town has done a good job on their budget. I'll support the town budget, but as long as you keep adding fluff like this and sneak it in. The other piece that I want to say is if you can play with these numbers and say, "Oh, if we can take $100,000 off of this line item and $100,000 off this line item, and we'll take it out of the slush fund at the end of the year if we use it," then do it for another $250,000. So, and I'm happy that the chairman of the board at the last meeting said her property taxes weren't going up almost nothing. So, I mean, congratulations to her. The rest of us don't feel that way. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ian McDonald, Valley Road, oh, that's better. 548 Valley Road, Davil. Yeah, I'll just, you know, I don't necessarily, not to speak to that specifically, but, you know, I don't necessarily share the opinion that the school budget has been really larded up. I think it is critical, you know, I think we were having an issue with losing teachers and quality of teachers and quality of schools is one of the, aside from the benefit to our students, is one of the key kind of economic development tools we have in our town. And it is one of the main things that people look at in any line of work, if they're in businesses, to consider moving to our town if the towns are seen as substandard. That's, that's a problem. And it's a problem for our kids, and it's a problem for retirees if we're graduating a lot of kids who are having difficulties. So I do think the cuts made were made very judiciously. My understanding is that we have to be kind of careful about how much we really rely on that nonlapsing account. It'd be nice to take it down farther, but, you know, there's, the whole point is there's uncertainty. And so my understanding, we have to be careful. I don't know if anybody, if that's a similar perspective, but that's all I'll say. I think that was, that was, it was good that we got it to where we did in the way that we did, and I hope we need to pass this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I just do have a couple of questions for the superintendent, Ms. Nash. The presentation that you had, the slideshow going, the printed packet, there were three slides that were actually not in the printed packet that were in the slide presentation. Is that slide presentation going to be available on the BOE website so everyone can see those three slides that weren't in the printed document? three slides that weren't in the printed document we were given?
Yes, those are animations, but I can have them made into specific slides, and we always post our slide deck on our Board of Education website.
Thank you. And I do have one other question. Considering what came out of, my understanding, what came out of the ad hoc committee regarding the Killenly Redman mascot, is there funding in this budget for any possible changes to the mascot or any other changes that would need, that could be deemed needed by the Board of Education as far as rebranding or anything along those lines? If that were to, if the Board of Education were to go forward with something like that, where would funds possibly come from if it's not in the budget?
That would need to be a Board of Education discussion.
Okay. Thank you. Any further public comment? Last call for public comment. Seeing none, I will, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to a machine vote on June 11th between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. at both polling locations.
So moved. Who was the one on the floor that seconded? Donna Bromwell?
Yep. Motion was made by Tammy Wakefield, seconded by Donna Bromwell. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming.